Get to in a moment, but first I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Simmons.
President.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Circe.
Here.
Great. Well, welcome again, everyone. Thank you very much for coming this evening. So we were to have actually two presentations tonight, but given the storms, we are unable to do the presentation on the, the new, I lost, what was the title of it?
The Bike Way on New Hampshire Avenue.
Right, the Bike Ways on New Hampshire Avenue. We will have to reschedule that unfortunately, but we are very lucky that we have members of the Montgomery County Planning Department showed up early, which is awesome, on the call. So we're going to turn it over to that team to do a short presentation and then have a discussion with the city council this evening. So the way, just so for folks who tuned in, the way we're doing tonight is we're going to have this presentation discussion with the planning department. And we will break no later than 6:30, maybe a little earlier since we only have the one presentation. We will take a slight break so people can get their dinner and get ready for our meeting at 7:30. So this will end by 6:30, we'll take a break and come back at 7:30. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Gwen Wright, the Director of the Planning Department.
Thank you so much. And again, we're very pleased to be here with you this evening. So we were invited to talk about a couple of different topics. And so I've brought along some folks to help me talk about those topics. The three topics that we're going to cover are update on where we are with the Tacoma Park Minor Master Plan Amendment, which has been added to our work program and which we've been coordinating with city staff on. The second topic is going to be our efforts in the Montgomery County Planning Department to look at the issue of racial equity in planning and to make sure we are considering racial equity in all of our planning projects. And then the third is just a quick update on a project that the Planning Board was briefly briefed on a week or two ago. That is our Purple Line pedestrian level of comfort study. And it is about how we are assessing the Purple Line stations and how easy it is for pedestrians to get to those stations. So I have a couple of people with me to help talk about these three topics, and I'd like to introduce them. The first person is Elza Heisel McCoy, who I think, I don't know if he has his camera on or not, I can't, can't quite tell. But Elza is the chief of our Area One team. We're divided geographically in the Planning Department. Area One is the area within side the Beltway. And Elza's here to talk about the Tacoma Park Minor Master Plan Amendment process. Did you want to say anything else in way, way, in the way of introducing yourself, Elza?
Thank you, Gwen. I just wanted to say hi to everybody, particularly to Councilmember Kovar, who's my district council member, and the councilmembers Kostic and Dibala, whom I've had the opportunity to work with, and of course, the city manager and staff. And so thank you for having us.
Great, thank you. And the other staff person who is going to be participating is Mollyne Jackson, who has many, many roles in the Planning Department. She is my special assistant, but she also works a lot on our equity and planning effort. And she is very involved in our public art effort. So Molly, would you like to say a few words of introduction?
Sure. This is Mollyne Jackson. I'm glad to be here. Thank you for inviting me. I worked at the commission for about 12 years and I've dabbled in a lot of different things, as Gwen has mentioned. My, my passions have always revolved around art and anything having to do with creating a world that's more empathetic. So I'm originally grew up in Wheaton, which is not too far from Silver Spring. And I currently live in New Carrolltown, which is in Prince George's County. But thank you for having me.
Great. So if we could go to the next image. I think, great. So I'm going to turn this over to Elza to talk about, for the most part. What I did want to emphasize is that this Minor Master Plan Amendment is something we have coordinated very closely with city staff on. We did not sort of come up with this idea of our own imagination. We actually had been talking a great deal with Suzanne Ludlow and Samara and other people on your staff and really talking about some of the issues and challenges that we're facing in the city related to the Adventist area and some of the residential areas along Maple Avenue. So we agreed it was time to do a Minor Master Plan Amendment. We worked with the county council to get this added to our work program for fiscal year '21, which is the fiscal year that just started on July 1st. And we are committed to working very, very closely with the city and the city staff on this project. So Elza, I'm going to turn it over to you to do a brief discussion of where we are, which is right at the very beginning.
Yes, thank you, Gwen. So I'm going to, as Gwen said, I'm going to speak very briefly and sort of in broad brush for the Tacoma Park Minor Master Plan Amendment. I think as we've been discussing with folks in the city, that the focus of the Minor Master Plan Amendment is going to be on the Washington Adventist campus, so both the university portion and the old, and the hospital site, but then also connections to the surrounding community. And we'll see this on the, on the next slide in greater detail. But a Minor Master Plan Amendment looks at many of the same things that a, a full-blown master sector plan will. So it's a comprehensive review as required by law, but it's on a more focused area. As Gwen said, we'll be having ongoing coordination with the city. The plan will address economic connectivity, equity, environment, and community character goals and identify implementation strategies. Next. Thank you. So in terms of, in terms of process, our schedule has us sort of kicking off the, the plan later this year in November. That's the beginning is sort of the, the background, the existing conditions analyses. And the rough schedule is to take a scope of work to the Planning Board and of course, to the City Council in early 2021. So the scope of work will set the boundary, the plan boundary, and only properties within the plan boundary can sort of qualify for land use recommendations. So that'll be the first step. The fleshing out the existing conditions and the visioning will then be spring and summer of next year. And you can see on the left-hand side, public engagement. We have a lot of experience with sort of trying new ideas to expand our public engagement process to reach more people, people who are not typically included in the planning process. We will continue to do that here. We will be, of course, working with your staff and you to do that. We would then develop a working draft that the City Council would review and approve, and then present that to the Planning Board with a public hearing and work sessions, and then ultimately in approval by the Planning Board of a Planning Board draft, which will then go to the county executive and the county council. The county council will have its own public hearing and its own work sessions. And then ultimately, when the county council approves the, the plan, it will be adopted and the zoning will be put in place. So for larger areas, this can be, you know, a three-plus-year effort. I think we're hoping to do it in a, in a shorter time than that. You know, the, the COVID pandemic has certainly impacted the timelines of all of our public outreach. And so, you know, we have to be flexible in our scheduling. But these are the, the steps that we'll be moving through. So I think, you know, again, November is sort of our, our internal kickoff. And we'll be having lots of conversations before then, during then, and after then, and we look forward to working with everybody.
And. Great. Thank you, Elza. And I think, well, if we can hold questions or comments till we get through the whole PowerPoint, and then we can take comments on all the elements of the presentation at the same time. And so Mollyne Jackson is next to talk about our racial equity in planning effort.
Thank you, Gwen. So I want to start with the timeline because we've been working on this for a while now and having more internal trainings. But a large part of what we've been doing and officially brought to the chiefs was done about two years ago. So we started in June of 2018. And of course, you know, along the way, we were also participating in the community conversations, which the county executive was having. We weren't partnered, we just attended those events, just to listen in and hear what folks were saying and be one of the, of the several people that attended these events. And last week, we presented an action plan, not last week, June 25th, we presented an action plan to the Planning Board. I'm here serving as a representative, but this is a team sport. We have a lot of people in the department that are working on this effort and making sure that it gets communicated in their work. And the tools that you're seeing in front of you were, some were the tools that we discussed with the Planning Board. I want to take a moment to just discuss why we're doing this in the first place. And these, everything I'm discussing right now is also in the body of the staff report. And I can send the link to the staff report that was presented on June 25th to the Planning Board. But our mission as a planning department is to improve the quality of life in Montgomery County in order to provide quality service to the current and future community members. We must incorporate racial equity and social justice when preparing master plans. Not just in master plans, though. We, we anticipate this work reaching into all of our work, really, but the resolution for which the county came out specifically identified master plans as being the mechanism that starts this conversation for us within the community. So we're using current and best practices to analyze and analyze adverse impacts in the community and to strengthen partnerships with stakeholders and continue to address present-day challenges on a regional scale. We have a number of definitions within the body of this staff report. And I just wanted to just read the definition for equity that we have, which is just and fair inclusion into a society where all can participate and prosper. The goal of equity must be to create conditions that allow, that allow all to reach their full potential. Of course, this definition was originated within the Planning Department, but we've referenced several other documents like National APA Chapter and other jurisdictions that are grappling and handling the same issues that we are. Equity and equality are often confused, but equality only achieves fairness if everyone starts from the same place and needs the same type of help. Equality may be defined as treating each individual in the same manner irrespective of needs and requirements. But the action plan that we presented to the Planning Board specifically focused was on equity. So I just wanted to make sure that you understood that we, we are defining these things in the, in the context and the body of the staff report. The first item on this action plan is an equity lens, I apologize, is an equity lens. And the equity lens is, you can think of it kind of as a checklist or a survey that we take out when we're doing our communications. And it emphasizes three, four areas of study, which happened to be communications and engagement, history and context, existing conditions, and future outcomes. Sorry, every time I click from my notes and back to the PowerPoint, it clicks to the next slide, so I apologize. The Equity Opportunities Index and the Community Equity Emphasis Area is, those are all kind of X and I GIS team are working on. And it kind of just gives a visual context to where we see equity being needed the most. And we're still developing these in the context of the general plan, the Thrive Montgomery General Plan. We are also working on a racial equity and social justice timeline, which gives indication of historical impacts on the community and some of the planning policies that were assessed during the planning process, both prior to and as we're developing the, the master plan itself. We are continuing our equity training specific to this, to the master plan. We're also coming up with research and data that points directly to sector plans and master plans. Community engagement, as Elza was saying, is also an ongoing evolving thing, especially given the new climate that we're in these days. We are working hard to set up an equity peer review group that would review communications, information, images that we're using in our PowerPoint presentations and things of that nature. And a few of the department-wide equity initiatives that are, in addition to the master planning efforts, would be the coordination of, the coordination with national and regional organizations and jurisdictions. We continue to do this in order to stay on top and stay current. Diversity and Inclusion Study that was done back in November internally to just, just identify, you know, hiring and staff and try to make sure we have all of the right pieces in our toolbox. We're also exploring redlining, a redlining mapping tool that is an ongoing thing. And it's going to take a serious effort initiated by our historic preservation team and, and in addition with our special projects and research team. We have also thought of a new feature within our department, the Development Review Navigators, which specifically help smaller developers to navigate our, our development review process. And then our, our historic preservation team is also taking a look at their comprehensive strategy and their planning to identify areas of improvement. So if you want more information on the historic preservation tool, I can definitely put you in touch with Rebecca Balo, who can provide a deeper, a deeper understanding and more clarity on exactly what that entails. So I'm going to pass it over to Gwen to kind of go through the pedestrian safety and purple line stops.
Thanks. We're going through a lot of information very, very quickly. And I imagine that you all will have lots of questions about the details of all of the topics that we're covering. So this is a real sort of, you know, 30,000-foot level review of these three very important projects. And we could talk probably for an hour about any of the three, but we're trying to, again, provide a quick overview and then see if you, if you want additional discussion. The third project that we wanted to mention is that our functional planning and policy staff just completed a Purple Line pedestrian connectivity report. We have been very, very interested in the Purple Line planning from the, from the get-go. And we have been working closely with the Purple Line Corridor Coalition that is being sort of led by folks at the National Center for Smart Growth. We have been supporting them in many ways and are very closely following all of the work that they are doing. One of the things that sort of dovetails well with a project that we're doing called our Pedestrian Master Plan is taking a look specifically at the pedestrian connectivity for the Purple Line stations. Some of you may know, or maybe don't know, we're doing a countywide pedestrian master plan. And it uses some of the same tools we used in our very innovative bicycle master plan that was approved over a year ago. In both of these projects, we have staff who are going out and assessing various connections. In the case of the Pedestrian Master Plan, it's the pedestrian connections and developing what we're calling a pedestrian level of comfort map. Trying to, in a relatively objective and quantitative way, assess the pedestrian level of comfort on essentially every street and road in Montgomery County. It's, it's a huge project. We did that for the Bicycle Master Plan. Now we're, we're doing the same thing for the Pedestrian Master Plan, and that is ongoing work. But we had some staff who focused in on the Purple Line station areas and specifically using the same tool, the pedestrian level of comfort tool, walked all the street, walking distance radius of the Purple Line stations, every Purple Line station in the county, and did a very quantitative assessment of how comfortable is it for pedestrians to walk to, to get to the Purple Line? With the understanding that if, if it's not comfortable to get to the Purple Line, people won't be using the Purple Line. People have to feel comfortable getting there. And what we discovered, not surprisingly, is that some stations are better than others. Particularly some of the stations in our more developed downtown areas already have great pedestrian connectivity. Downtown Bethesda, downtown Silver Spring, we have wider sidewalks, we have lots of crosswalks, we have traffic lights that make it easier to get across the street and to get to Purple Line stations. But there are other stations where it is not so easy. So for example, Tacoma Langley. The, the stations particularly that are close to, to major highways and that don't have great sidewalks, that don't have great pedestrian traffic signals, that don't have great crosswalks, those are the ones where the pedestrian level of comfort assessment showed that the connectivity is not, is not great. So what this project did, in addition to assessing each of the Purple Line stations, is made assessing each of the Purple Line Stations, is made a series of recommendations about what are some of the short, mid and long range improvements that could be made that would increase the pedestrian level of comfort. And I'm going to just actually read from the executive summary. It says, "The results reveal that in general, stations located in central business districts all have high pedestrian connectivity even before considering additional recommendations. All stations located on major highways with higher posted speed limits, and this included Woodside, Long Branch, Piney Branch Road and Tacoma Langley, demonstrate low connectivity prior to additional recommendations. Wherever possible, substantial increases in pedestrian connectivity were achieved with additional recommendations. But some station areas saw limited increases in connectivity. This was true, for example, for Dale Drive, Long Branch and Piney Branch Road, because pedestrian improvements would require either taking away front yard space from private owners or redevelopment of privately owned properties." Essentially saying there wasn't much right of way available to make pedestrian improvements. However, what we did find is that in our certain of our Purple Line Stations, we were able through some relatively simple, short-term improvements, such as reducing speed limits to 25 miles an hour, installing high-visibility crosswalks, making sure that sidewalks are in good condition and, you know, not deteriorating. Those all really added a great deal of level of comfort. Then there were sort of medium to long-term strategies as well that were, were more costly, slower to implement, such as actually take, building wider sidewalks and putting in planted sidewalk buffers. And even putting in the recommended dedicated bike lanes, because those also serve as another kind of buffer for the pedestrians to keep them farther away from the, the cars that are, that are moving fairly quickly. So again, this example was at Tacoma Langley. This was one where it had very low connectivity at the time of the Purple Line opening, but that we said if we could implement the report's recommendations, some of them short-term, some of them mid and long-term, we could get the connectivity improved to 83%. If we could go to the next image, I just want to show you again that we did this for each and every one of the Purple Line Stations in Montgomery County. The blue represents the, the level of, of comfort at the time of the opening of the Purple Line, pedestrian, yeah, pedestrian comfort level. The red represents where we can get to with some short-term improvements. And the green represents the medium and long-term improvements that would be necessary to get to a pedestrian level of comfort. Again, as you can see with Tacoma Langley, the the short-term are just over 40% improvement. To get to the 83, we'd have to do some of the long-term, mid to long-term. But we did this so that we can, again, talk to our County Department of Transportation, talk to our State Highway Administration, try to get them to focus on some of these, particularly the short-term, but also the medium and long-term improvements, so as to make the connectivity and the pedestrian level of comfort to the Purple Line as effective as possible. We again believe that's so important because otherwise we aren't going to have people using this important piece of infrastructure unless they feel comfortable getting to it. So that's the brief overview of that project. And I think the next slide just basically has my contact information and opens things up for question and answer. So Elsa, Mollie, myself are all available to answer questions on the projects we've mentioned today or any other project that you might, might be interested in.
Great. Well, thank you so much for that presentation. It was, it was awesome. As you said, a lot of information. I'll ask my colleagues to raise their hands and as they're doing it, I, I'd like to start off with a question right where you left off Gwen on the Purple Line Safety and Connectivity. And I wonder if we could put, take down the, well, maybe we want to keep the presentation up so we can look at it. That would be great. So as, as you may know or may not know, this area in particular is one that we've been, Councilwoman Cersei and our city staff have been working very hard, especially with Delegate Charcutian and the rest of the D20 delegation to really get State Highway's attention on this area and particularly some of the roads. And I guess the, the question I have is, I know you said that this is something to, you know, show and work with State Highway and the County Department of Transportation. But I guess my question is like, where are those conversations and is it possible to, to look at putting in place some of these shorter-term ones before, like, like right away? Because these are some of the things that we've been actually trying to push for, for a while.
Yeah.
By the way.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think, I think we're all in agreement that many of the improvements in place before the Purple Line Station opens as we possibly can. That's why we tried in the report to split it into these short-term solutions that are relatively inexpensive and have impact. Simply dropping the speed limit to 25 miles an hour, which does not require anything except changing out signs, has a dramatic impact in improving the pedestrian level of comfort. We would be thrilled to, again, this is very new information for us. We just finished this study. We just presented it to the planning board. We would be very happy to work with the city on trying to, you know, perhaps get a presentation to folks in, you know, high enough up in the State Highway Administration who might be able to implement some of these changes. I think that, you know, again, as the planning department, we always have our, we always have a little frustration, which is we can provide all the data, we can lead the horses to water, we can't always make them drink. And so we are glad to, you know, work closely with the Tacoma Park City Council to get this information into the right hands and to maybe get the horses to drink a little bit.
Thank you. I don't think that was, I didn't touch my audio. Can you hear me now?
Yes, you're good.
Okay. I didn't touch anything, so I don't know if that was me. Councilwoman Cersei.
Good evening. First, I want to say thank you so much. This has been a very informative presentation. And I, I did have the luxury of reviewing the Connectivity Report and I think it was an awesome piece of work. I wish I had it in hand during some of the initial planning discussions in terms of the Purple Line and working with the contractors there, S H A and others. Because you, you hit on a number of salient points. One is the fact of the right of way and the fact that the Purple Line is basically consuming in and of itself, the vast majority of the right of way. I think there may be some opportunities, if we work fast, to be able to implement maybe some of the longer-term ideas, as long as we can kind of bring some of the key stakeholders to the table before a lot of things like sidewalks and specs are kind of installed. I mean, one of the things that we've talked about with Purple Line Transit Partners is that something as simple as trees, it's a very wide amount of like hardscaping. We have very large parking lots, right? It can be very hot. And part of the, the plans are to also cut down some of the mature trees that are there. They're going to replace them with shrubs. But when we're thinking about, what are some ways to try to make sure that that walk is very comfortable for people? And there's shade and it's, it's not overly burdensome. That's part of the idea as well. So I definitely look forward to, to working with you and your team to try to identify ways that we can hit them on all fronts. To try to see how we might be able to get even some of these longer-term recommendations implemented, as long as we're able to do it at the right time. So I, a number of the things that you have are really spot on. Another area, I, I love the reducing the speed limit. I think that would be great. One of the things that we've been dealing with in terms of the communities that are immediately surrounding the Purple Line Stations are this cut-through traffic. And I know that right now, and I'm trying to remember the report correctly, kind of looking at the level of comfort in terms of the current state of play. And one of the things that a number of residents are concerned about is how the Purple Line may change things, not just for pedestrians, but also for car behavior, which might also impact pedestrians, if that makes sense. So it's a circular thing. So if you're creating these instances where it's more comfortable for vehicles to drive through residential communities, then that might lower the pedestrian safety for those people who live in those neighborhoods. And so another thing that we've been trying to talk to county and state folks about is whether or not there are resources that might be made available to do traffic studies after the Purple Line is up and running. So if we see some changes in traffic flow as a result, I mean, ideally, we want traffic to go down, right? Ideally, we want people to get out of their cars. But should that not happen and there's a redirection of traffic flow through residential communities, it would be helpful to be able to have the necessary resources available to do those traffic studies. So if we need to make some tweaks to some of our residential communities to ensure pedestrian safety, we can do that. So that's something else that I think might be helpful to keep in mind pre-post. Like right now, it's a bit of a mess. It has always been a mess. Hopefully, some of the changes that are being made with the Purple Line will make things better. But we also have to kind of think about the world after the Purple Line and how that might actually impact some other connectivity points that are currently okay. But if cars are redirected, could have a negative impact. So again, thank you so much for presenting. I love the report, like awesome report, great job on that. And definitely look forward to working with you all down the line so that we can try to get some of these recommendations implemented. Because I think it could do a lot of good for the community.
We look forward to it also.
Terrific. Councilwoman DeBala.
Yes, thank you. First, thank you Elsa, Mollie and Gwen for coming and for opening, for continuing to have conversations with us, coordinating on various issues. That's just fabulous. On the Purple Line, before we turn to the hospital minor ma, area minor master plan on the, on the Purple Line, two things. I saw the kind of, the Connectivity Report before I realized, y'all, we're going to talk about it tonight. And it was awesome. Secondly, I noticed that of all the sites you showed, the one that gives the biggest bang for the buck with the short-term measures is Tacoma Langley. So absolutely, not just for Ward 6, but for all parts of the city where people use public transit. Very much like to work with you on that. Turning for a moment to the minor master plan for the Washington Adventist Hospital area. The schedule, COVID-dependent for sure, sounded great. But I had a question going into the scope of work, defining the plan boundaries. Is that a decision that you will primarily make as planners? Is that something that the city would have input on? Is that something that residents might have input on? Or would you prefer to have that conversation about the boundaries after you come up with a proposal?
I'm going to let Elsa address that. You know, I, I would just say that we, we want very much for this to be a very participar, participatory, transparent process right from the get-go, including conversations about the boundaries. But I'm going to let Elsa address that a little more specifically.
I understand that. Thank you Elsa.
Sure. So it had been sort of standard practice for, in, in typical cases, for the planners to, you know, look at an area and, and come up with a planned boundary. In many cases, you know, we've had every, you know, square foot of Montgomery County master planned at some point in the last 60 years. And so there might, you know, a starting point might be the previous boundary with tweaks. With the Silver Spring Downtown and Adjacent Communities Plan, you know, we, we presented a scope of work to the board that had a planned boundary. And the planning board sort of went a bit of a different direction and said, "We'd like to make a more significant change to the planned boundary." And the, there was a lot of community interest in sort of what that would end up being. And so staff did a certain amount of outreach and presented options to the board. But I think frankly, it made us sort of rethink the way that we, the way that maybe we do scopes of work. And, you know, I, I think that is, you know, the, it's pretty easy to identify the, Mollie, could you go to the, the slide just before this? It's pretty easy to identify the Washington Adventist Campus. It's, it's defined. But I think one of the key issues with this plan is, or, or two of the issues is going to be the housing along Maple, but then also the, the traffic, the vehicular, the transit, transportation connections out to university, out to Piney Branch. And so, you know, I, I think that, that's something that we'll have to talk about. So I, I don't think, that was a long answer, but I, I don't think it's going to be as, as cut and dried. So I think that's something that as we get closer, we'll want to talk about. Because there was a lot of, there was more interest in the Silver Spring Plan. You know, I, I've worked on a handful of plans. There was more interest in the, in the scope of work and the boundary for that plan than any of the other plans I worked on. So I think that's something for us to think about.
Okay. Thank you very much for that.
Sorry, I was muted. That actually leads me to a good question, which is for folks who are sort of just tuning into this presentation, maybe we could say like, why is this a big deal? Why is it, yeah, having, what does it mean to have a minor master plan amendment? Like, what are the implications for this moving forward? What do we use this for? For folks who kind of are just tuning in on this.
Sure. Sure. Well, Elsa, you, you start and I'll join in.
So in order to change zoning, state law requires a comprehensive review of land use, transportation, environment and other factors. of land use, transportation, environment and other factors in order to make recommendations. Only the county council can can approve new zoning and only after this comprehensive review, which is the master or sector or minor master plan amendment process. And each one of those covers sort of any, a decreasing area. So a master plan will cover a very large area. A sector plan will cover sort of a more, you know, like a, like a, the downtown Silver Spring or downtown Bethesda. A minor master plan amendment is sort of either an even further refinement, looking at a more focused area that maybe doesn't fit the criteria or isn't the best fit for for a sector plan effort. But what this effort will do is allow changes in zoning. It will allow the master plans set the rights of way for public roads. And they are also a, I think, a decisive tool in the qualitative aspects of redevelopment. And so they, you know, beyond, you know, zoning can be sometimes a blunt tool. The, you know, some of the families of zones that we have are, allow us to calibrate much more than we could, you know, before 2014. But the sector plan allows you to take the vision that, you know, this process and all the time and effort that people put into it, you know, for different sites, for for more qualitative elements, the sector plan is really important in being able to do that.
Mayor, maybe I can jump in before Gwen does, if that's all right. So one of the reasons that city staff actually originally raised the concept of doing a minor master plan is obviously the hospitals moved or essentially moved, all of that land is zoned for single family homes only or for, with a special exception, for a hospital. And that's not going to be a hospital. There's been a lot of discussion in our community about the need for adequate school space, real concern for space for healthcare and and obviously educate. So education, healthcare and housing are the elements that the council asked, that we look for. And when we were looking at these varieties of sites and knowing even, say, the Pine Branch Elementary School is a constrained site, we wanted to have an opportunity to talk out what are the needs of the community at this time when we've got potentially some flexibility with this property. And so it was, I was very happy that we were able to have a walking tour with with the planning staff and really talk out kind of what, how would you think about this? And they said, you know, it's a, it's, it fits very well as a minor master plan process. So looking forward to this process. I'm very happy that it got approved by the county council to move forward. And and it really does, it's it's not just because it was time, but we really are at this transition point where we need to think through as a public group, what's the, what's the vision for this site?
Well, Ms. Lundlo said exactly what I would have said, which is that this does end up in a rezoning, but it really, I think more importantly, is a way for the community to come together and create a vision for how they want a particular asset, a particular part of their community to evolve over time. And so it does result in a rezoning. It does have implications for, you know, what might be built. But it's also, I'm, you know, still sort of a bit of a dreamer. I believe that there is a value in actually envisioning what you want to see in the future and and then putting the tools in place to make it happen. And that's really what the plan is about.
Great. Thank you. I just thought that might be helpful as some people are watching this evening. Councilman Kostick.
Thank you very much. I just want to echo my colleagues' thanks for the presentation and for these great reports and the great work that you're doing. Very briefly, a couple of items, just wanted to toss out related to the overall master planning. And then I had a couple of questions on the Purple Line connectivity report. I would be really interested in getting some more information on, you mentioned the historic preservation team looking into equity. And it seems to me that that is a really crucial area to look, since there may be things we want to preserve from history, but there are things that we don't want to preserve from history, and those are the inequities. And so I'm very interested in what you're thinking on that and where that process will go. And then I'm very much looking forward to the minor master plan process. It sounds like a really necessary and important tool, and it will be a great opportunity for the community to take part in this and also to envision what that site will look like in the future, not being a hospital anymore. Related to the Purple Line connectivity report, and as my colleagues have said, I thought it was extremely useful and really can move us forward in a positive direction for connectivity there for pedestrians. Just today, actually, I sit on the National Capital Region Transportation Planning Board. And just today, we adopted TPB Transit Access Focus Areas, which included the Tacoma Langley Station area, which is really great news. And I would imagine that that will offer some additional opportunities for incentivizing work perhaps with the states and perhaps collaboratively across jurisdictions, particularly in this area. So I was curious if you had had worked with the TPB and utilized some of their data in that process? Or if those were separate? And if there were any things that maybe both processes could glean from each other?
Yeah, we are very fortunate to have a close relationship with our colleagues at Cog in general. I serve as the co-chair of the Planning Directors Group at Cog. And so we meet on a monthly basis. We frequently have joint meetings with the Housing Directors Group when we're talking about housing issues in the region. But just this past week, we had a meeting where we were briefed by TPB staff on, I think, the exact project that you've just described. And so we are closely coordinating with them. And I think they've been doing really, really excellent research and data collection. And we try to share as much of that as we can. We have things that help them from a data perspective. They have things that help us from a data perspective. So we think the work that they're doing on TOD areas, on transportation and transit areas, I think it's, I think we're all very much rowing in the same direction.
Great. Thank you. And then finally, I was just thinking through more for our own purposes here in Tacoma Park than at the planning board level. But I think the pedestrian master plan and Vision Zero and this report all could be really useful to us as we're thinking through how we prioritize our new sidewalk construction projects and our traffic calming projects. And we've been talking for some time about improving our systems for requesting those changes. And it seems to me that these could really be an opportunity for us to utilize the data and prioritize those in a meaningful way. So I'm looking forward to doing that in the future.
Yeah, we, and we are glad to, again, collaborate with your city staff in in any way that would be helpful to try to to work on that. We've, we've developed a great group of staff who are amazing in terms of their data collection and and analysis abilities in our functional planning and policy group. And we want to share all of that information as as much as possible.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to everybody from the planning office for the excellent presentation. And it's nice to see Elsa, who's award one person acting his official capacity in briefing us. So I appreciate that. I just had a few questions about the the master plan, then one other unrelated thing. So, and I'm not sure who should best answer this, but in the timeline for the, yeah, there it is. So it includes the city council review and approval. So as that is structured, would we actually here vote on yes or no on something? And then it could change ultimately as it went through the county process, right? Does that, the same sort of super majority requirements apply at that stage? Or is it just we approve it and then the county council approves it too?
Well, the super majority requirements are in play. We would ask for the city council to review and approve moving forward with the working draft. There would still be planning board and county council public hearings. But if the city had a strong objection to any portion of the plan, the county council would be required to vote with a super majority. The ultimate decision maker on master plans is the county council, not the planning board. Planning board is just another step in the process. And but the ultimate decision makers are the county council. And if the city objected to a portion of the document, there would be a super majority required.
Okay, thank you. And since one of the possible uses of the Adventist Hospital site that's been discussed at various points is the potential for there being a school there, would the county schools also be a part of this discussion or?
Yeah, and I'll let Elsa talk about that. But I think it is very high on our list to engage MCPS right at the outset. But did you want to address that, Elsa?
Well, I would just say that, you know, we engage with all of the county agencies, the housing, you know, DHCA, Montgomery County Public Schools, you know, in in order to, you know, if there's a determination that a new school site is required, that would also be something that would be a key element of the sector plan. So, or of the minor master plan amendment, excuse me. So, yeah, we'll be, we'll be reaching out and working with all of the, all of the agencies that will be involved in, you know, the ultimate implementation of the plan.
Okay, thank you. And then I'm just curious, we've been sort of talking to State Highway for a while about different speed limit things, and it seems like it goes really slowly. You've had some success. Is that just because you're bigger players on the, on the county scene than we are potentially, or is there?
I think it's because we've had deaths.
What's that?
I'm sad to say, but I think it's because we have had fatalities. Beers Mill Road is an example we have gotten, we have been pressing and pressing State Highway to make some changes and to put in some pedestrian signals on Beers Mill, and we're getting anywhere. And I'm sad to say that we had a couple of fatalities. And that, I think, is what ultimately pushed them to action. It is a terrible thing that that's, you know, what it took. But, you know, we also are not, we, we don't have a magic wand, I guess is what I'm saying, to get, to get agreement with State Highway over particular things. We negotiate just as you do. I think what has moved several efforts forward have been a combination of some fatalities, which really created a focus on Vision Zero and us doing a very detailed Beers Mill Corridor Master Plan that focused on many of these topics and got State Highway, you know, really on board.
So at least in this case, although it would only be for this one area within the city, that speed limit component could be part of what's looked at. Is that a fair thing to say?
Yeah, I think when we do a minor master plan or any master plan, we do shine the spotlight on a particular geographic area. And that does help with, you know, negotiations and getting State Highway to maybe focus a little bit more on it.
Good, thank you. And I know other people may have questions about the presentations themselves. And either now or after that, since there's been an array of questions about the Tacoma Junction project, and you did say if we had other questions, I think it would be helpful just if the community could hear, and I don't know whether it should be Elsa or Gwen, what, a short description of what the potential timetable looks like for that.
Yeah, I'm going to turn that over to Elsa, because he knows the most current information about the application.
Thank you. So right now, so the zoning code establishes review periods for regulatory applications, but the planning board and the director can extend them. So the review period is right now extended through the end of September. I don't think it's really possible to have a, to have, sorry, running out of battery power. I don't think it's possible to have a, a planning board hearing by the end of September. So I think it will be, it will be after that. But I don't have, you know, the applicant team just resubmitted earlier this week, updated drawings, and so we're still going through those. So I think, you know, in the next couple of weeks, I think we'll have, next week or so, I think, after we get through the the last planning board date at 8787 Georgia Avenue, we'll be in a better position to understand the timing. But it will likely be, you know, later, a month or two later than the end of September.
Thank you.
Elsa, this is, Mayor, do it again. Again, just for folks who are tuning in at home, if you could just elaborate just a little bit on, you said that the applicant resubmitted drawings and you all, as the planning department staff, are going through those. Could you just kind of describe to us the process that, like where we are right now in this process? Because I think we don't do development projects very often in the city of this scale. And so I think we all, everyone gets a little bit confused and lost in where we are exactly in the process.
And Mayor, just a note, I was also going to go through my city manager comments.
Okay. Great.
Sure. So the, in the typical review process, applicants submit applications and all of the agencies do a review and provide comments via the Development Review Committee. This was done, I think, in February of 2019. For reasons that I think are pretty well understood by the folks on this call, State Highway did not provide their comments on the original application until May of this year. So we are essentially looking at the first resubmission after, after DRC. So from here, it's an iterative process. The revised drawings, you know, are intended to address specific comments that were raised by planning staff, city staff, Rosin and Jamie are assigned reviewers. And the the county and and state reviewing agencies will all be looking to see how the applicant has addressed those original comments. So sort of from here on out, it's an iterative process. You know, has the, have all of the issues that have been raised that would prevent the board from making all the findings it needs to make in order to recommend approval? Have all those issues been substantively addressed or could be addressed with conditions? And so we are, you know, we had hoped to sort of be in this, in a more typical project, we would have been in this position, you know, in March. project, we would have been in this position, you know, in March or April of 2019. But we are where we are, and we have a week or so to do that review and then provide comments back to the applicant. So it'll really depend on what is in the, you know, the extent to which the revised application addresses those concerns.
Thank you so much for that.
Sure. And then let me also just add that once once the determination is made that all of those issues have been addressed, then there's sort of a two-month process for, you know, for, after final drawings are submitted, for all of the agencies to complete their analysis and make their recommendations, for staff to draft a report, for that report to be posted, and then it's posted two weeks in advance of the Planning Board. And then, of course, because we're in the city, or this project is in the city, then your review will also factor into that. And so, you know, this won't go to the Planning Board until the City Council has has voted on it. So there are a number of steps that need to happen before we get there.
Great, thank you so much for that. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, guys, for the presentation. Sorry, couldn't see the first part of it. On the slide that you had regarding connectivity with the Purple Line, can you talk more about Long Branch, the R-list Purple Line stop? And just espound on that?
So I have to admit that I do not know the specific detailed recommendations for every stop. I can get that information from staff and send it to you. I do know that Long Branch is one that has relatively, again, according to this chart, relatively decent pedestrian level of comfort, even at the time of the Purple Line opening. And that pedestrian level of comfort can be improved by some short-term changes. And those kinds of short-term changes involve, as we mentioned, lowering of speed limits, improvements of existing sidewalks. There seems to be enough right-of-way, you know, to do that in this particular circumstance. And some of the other stops, obtaining the right-of-way to make the changes is is what's the challenge. But I know that, again, staff looked at each stop and had specific recommendations for each stop, and I can make sure to get you what they said about Long Branch and and send that, send that to you.
That'd be excellent. Now, let me transfer over to the mini-master plan, since that is in Ward Five. You guys talked about that, of course, residents, the city, will be a part of this process. But can you mention or give some examples of other parts of the county that have done something similar to a parcel like this, a reuse type of vision, whether it was an old office park, or, you know, Lake Forest Mall, I think is the idea of changing the zoning on that parcel has been, you know, floated around the county for a long time. Is there any other parcel that, you know, this is like 12 acres, that you guys can, can give us an example where, you know, went through this process, this is what it looked like beforehand, and this is what we see now?
There are, you know, every site is unique, but our our bread and butter is essentially reimagining sites that maybe haven't reached their full potential. And we've done it on sites that are as big, if not much bigger, than this property. Years and years ago, I'll step back and, you know, describe the 2000 Silver Spring Plan took what was an underutilized armory and some very, very deteriorated buildings and parking lots, and envisioned a new future for downtown Silver Spring. And it was built, and it is what we see there today. The same thing was really true with the White Flint Plan. Again, these are, I think, at even sort of larger scales than perhaps what we're talking about in this instance, where we took a, you know, again, very deteriorated strip shopping center and envisioned a new future that had a mix of uses, had great architecture, had open spaces, had additional grid of streets, and that's been implemented in the Pike and Rose development as a first phase, and there are subsequent phases that are are being planned. So again, neither of those is exactly like this site. This site has a lot of sensitivities. It has, you know, an excellent use of the Adventist College already on the site that I think, you know, we all want to support. It has a lot of single-family neighborhoods surrounding it. So I do want to be clear, we aren't necessarily talking about the levels of development that we saw in a place like Pike and Rose or downtown Silver Spring. But I was sort of using those to describe how we have taken areas that maybe haven't reached their potential, envisioned a new future as part of a master plan process, and then seen that future built out. Those are ones that come to mind. I don't know, Elsa, I want to give you a chance to respond as well.
Hey, you know, the Purple Line plans certainly had a focus like that, but again, you know, they were looking for new transit. But I think, you know, there are the Labor College site on New Hampshire Avenue. I don't know if that was addressed as part of the White Oak Plan. I think we can do some looking in the area, one, we don't, which is inside the Beltway. We don't have too many sites like this. But I think, as Gwen said, you know, when we do sector plans even for, you know, for downtown, but there's the downtown Silver Spring, we're looking at underdeveloped sites and working with the community to to generate, you know, a vision for what that, for what that could be. So I think, you know, the this is a prime site for us to do that.
I appreciate both those comments. You know, I think it'd be really helpful for residents to see, you know, what, maybe what they don't want, right? And actually say, hey, this is in, whether Pike and Rose, or, you know, parts of downtown Silver Spring. So that when these conversations begin, it's much easier to come to some type of decision point if people actually understand what's on the table. Right?
Senator Smith, one of the, one of the things when they were doing the Purple Line Sector Plan really was how to reinforce and protect adjacent neighborhoods, too. So it's not only, you know, what kind of big development can you have, but also kind of identifying what are the sensitive environmental features and the residential areas that we want to have protections for. So that's some of that kind of thing that has been done, just not in a one central place like this particular area is.
And I would say that, you know, I'm not sold that this is the right site for another school. I think that residents should have an option. You know, density, I think, should be something that should be on the table. Residents should be able to decide the extent of density, housing density, they want on that site. And how Washington Adventist University, the future of that institution, how that will influence the site, or whether or not it does influence the site. I mean, you know, with the pandemic, a lot of these smaller schools are having a very difficult time. The site is supposed to be transferred to the university. I just don't want us to go down the road with this master plan and, and, you know, things have to change on ownership and the direction of what Washington Adventist University wants to see on the site. But thank you very much for the presentation. I think there's a lot of potential for, for the community and for the city as a whole.
Great, thank you. All right, our last comment and question will be Councilman Circe, and then we'll break before our next meeting.
Great, and I promise this will be fast. So have you all, did you all work with Prince George's County Planning in terms of the pedestrian connectivity for Purple Line? I know for the Tacoma Langley station, you know, the opposite side of the street is Prince George's County. And I know that our colleagues on that side of the line are interested in seeing similar things happen. And so I'm just starting to think now about ways in which we can leverage, especially in terms of like getting a FHA's attention, be able to lobby our Prince George's colleagues as well, because they want similar things. Are you aware of any similar efforts underway on the Prince George's side, or in terms of similar recommendations that we might be able to call together?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that our staff did talk to the Prince George's County Planning Staff about the Tacoma Langley site specifically. However, they didn't look at any of the other Purple Line station sites in Prince George's County. But I think you raise a good point that if we're trying to move this forward, it works better to present a united front. And I certainly can reach out to my counterpart, Andre Chekley, in Prince George's County to see if they have an interest in, you know, perhaps partnering with us to to make a presentation to State Highway. And, you know, really, I think the focus really can be on Tacoma Langley because there is such great potential for some short-term improvements that would have a big impact.
I think that would be great. That would be wonderful if we can organize that. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much. I think that we're at 6:20, so we just want to, again, extend our thanks for this great presentation. We really appreciate all the work that the Planning Department is doing. And we're just looking forward to continuing the partnership. So thank you for coming this evening, and I'm sure we'll be in contact soon. So.
Thank you for having us. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
So we're going to, the City Council is going to take a break now, and we'll be back by 7:30 to move ahead with our regular meeting. I'd just like to ask my council members to please check their email. The city clerk sent something out that you should review while eating your dinner. So we're prepared for our meeting and our voting session tonight. So thank you, everyone, and we'll be back at 7:30.